Yes, but you don't have to do the public hearing packets at all. They'll be done. But you do need to read the executive.
Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order this October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Richfield City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and these are public hearings? Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the City Council work session from September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, and the City Council regular meeting from September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we've approved the minutes. So next, we're going to move on to the open forum. Members of the public are invited to address the City Council during open forum. Speakers who have completed a comment card will be called to the podium to speak first. Speakers are asked to state their first and last name, city of residence, and the topic or item they wish to speak on. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to provide their comments. Please note that that time may not be transferred or shared with another individual. So in order not to disrupt what you're saying, when we get down to thirty seconds, I'll hold up a yellow card so you know that you should start wrapping up, and when the time is up, I'll hold up the red card. Open forum is an opportunity for the council to listen to public input. Council members will not respond to questions or comments during this time. However, all remarks will be taken into consideration. The council may direct staff to follow up or take appropriate action as needed. For more information on how to participate or provide public comment, please visit the city website at www.richfieldmn.gov/city underscore government slash city underscore councils slash more underscore information. Now, later this evening, we will have a public hearing that has to do with the various assessments, whether that was for the solid waste charges, for the ILN Seventy-seventh Street project area, the removal of diseased trees, the sanitary sewer line assessment, and the utility account assessments. So if you're here to speak about that, that will be later on during the public hearing time. And it's my understanding that all of the comment cards I have at the moment are for that public hearing instead of just the general open forum. So is there anyone that just wants to speak to the general open forum and not about the assessments? You had a question? Is this for the general open forum or for the assessments? All right, if you could step forward and state your name and your city of residence.
Good evening. My name's Latoya Peterson, and I am a city resident of the city of Richfield. I know I only have three minutes. It's just a quick question. I'll look for follow-up, and I'm hoping that there's comments later. I do see that someone from the police office, police department, is here tonight, so I hope that he's paying attention to this concern. On my way home on Sunday, September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, I encountered white, five white police officers responding to a juvenile matter. I'm sorry, I'm emotional because it's extremely disturbing. The response I got for why there were so many police officers present was because of the crowd. There were more police officers than there were citizens. There were two parents visibly upset and arguably agreeably upset about four or five onlookers who were just videotaping the incident. And when I approached, seemed to be non-competitive and were not actually engaged in the situation. They were just recording, because as we know in our cities and our state, that that's the best practice. My concerning question is, what is the city's protocol for response to juveniles? Why was a juvenile sitting in the back of a squad car for as many minutes as he was? Why does the city believe that having five white male police officers respond is the best practice for this young, young black juvenile? Why did the responding sergeant believe that it was okay to start aggressively walking towards me and get in my face to explain the policy? If a civilian such as myself had done that, I would have been in handcuffs, or worse could have happened to myself. My solution to this and hope that comes out of this is a conversation with law enforcement about de-escalation skills and best practice for responding to hostile, while within their reason and understanding, parents, community members, and other officials that stopped by. And just an FYI, I work for the state of Minnesota. This is deeply concerning. Thank you.
Thank you. Since you didn't fill out a comment card, could you leave your contact information so we can get back to you as well?
Yes, ma'am. Where would you like me to leave that?
Do we have a, okay, the city clerk will help you with that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during open forum? Thank you. Then we'll move on to the proclamations and presentations. And so our first proclamation is celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I would, will be joined by Human Rights Commissioner Maddie Wookson. So if you could join me up front? Thank you so much. This is a proclamation of the city of Richfield. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day is a celebration of the cultures, lands, and languages of indigenous peoples, excuse me, throughout the land in which the United States is built on. And whereas the Dakota and Anishinaabe people have lived on the ancestral lands of Minnesota for thousands of years, including the land of the city of Richfield. And whereas Indigenous peoples have served courageously throughout our history in all aspects of our society and deserve to be recognized and respected for all their contributions. And whereas Minnesota is home to countless Indigenous leaders, including Winona LaDuke, Louise Erdoch, and Clyde Bellicourt. And whereas Mary Kunisch is the first Indigenous Minnesota State Senator. And whereas the state of Minnesota is honored to have Peggy Flanagan serve as our lieutenant governor, representing white earth nation. And whereas the city of Richfield confirms its commitment to supporting, uplifting, and honoring Indigenous peoples to ensure a better future for all members of our community. Now therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim October thirteenth as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Richfield and call on the people of Richfield to observe this period with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies, and continue to honor the contribution of Indigenous Americans throughout the year. Proclaim this fourteenth day of October, two thousand and twenty-five. Commissioner Wookson, thank you for joining us. Would you like to say anything?
Sure. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Supple, and the City Council for having me here tonight. I am honored to accept the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation on behalf of the Human Rights Committee of Richfield. Lastly, I would like to stay, state that as a community member and a member of the Human Rights Commission, that I believe it's imperative for us as a community to keep learning and teaching ourselves and our children about the Indigenous cultures, and that we have a duty for our future to continue acknowledging all the cultures that make up our great state of Minnesota and Richfield.
Thank you. Our next presentation is the annual report of the Community Services Commission. So I'd like to welcome Chair Tessa Johansson to the podium to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. There we go. All right. Happy to be here to share our report of accomplishments since last October. Our Community Services Commission received regular updates on projects like the new splash pad, which opened this past year, Woodlake Nature Center's building project, and improvements to the Richfield Pool and Ice Arena. We also assisted with grading proposals for the new playground equipment at Donaldson Park. We used criteria based on neighborhood feedback sessions that were done in two thousand and twenty-three. We also heard updates on the installation, which was completed in September, and it's looking very nice. We provided feedback and heard updates for the projects related to the successful local sales tax referendum. We also prioritized proposed capital projects and recommended council approval of the two thousand and twenty-six Parks Recreation and Open Space Capital Improvement Budget, as well as the two thousand and twenty-seven through two thousand and thirty Capital Improvement Plan. We also met jointly with the Sustainability Commission to hear presentations from Woodlake Nature Center, Recreation Services, and the Forestry Division of Public Works. We met on-site at the Richfield Pool for a facility tour, which I think everybody in the commission really enjoyed. We were able to see the new splash pad and review a summary of the pool improvements that are planned for the off-season. We also reviewed plans and policies for the revamped Recreation Fee Assistance Program, which saw seventeen thousand dollars in funds utilized by qualifying Richfield households to assist with paying for activity fees. We also provided guidance and feedback to staff regarding the Roundup for Richfield Parks Program at the Richfield Liquor Stores. In two thousand and twenty-five, over one thousand two hundred dollars was raised to benefit the New Recreation Fee Assistance Program Fund, which I will just note that our commission was really supportive and I think really excited to hear about that particular program. We also appointed new and returning members to the Friends of Woodlake Board. And then new this year, we staffed tables at special events representing the Community Services Commission and sharing information about serving on Richfield Advisory Boards and Commissions. Our commission was present at the Earth Day Celebration, the opening week of the farmer's market, the State of the Community Celebration, as well as Pen Fest. We also appointed liaisons to and received regular reports from the Planning Commission, Arts Commission, Friends of Woodlake Board, Transportation Committee, and Sustainability Commission. And we also continued to receive regular reports from staff related to recreation programs in Woodlake Nature Center, Pool Arena, and Wheel Fund Mini Golf and Malt Shop, Parks Maintenance, Sustainability and Organics Composting. I think this coming year will be somewhat similar, and that will continue to be prioritizing capital improvement items, continuing to hear regular reports from staff and other commissions, and providing feedback and guidance on approved capital projects, including the Woodlake Building Project, play equipment replacement schedule, and other projects. Lastly, I did also just want to mention, I think, how much appreciation our commission has for the work that's being done for the Woodlake Nature Center building. The thoughtfulness that has gone into the design has certainly not gotten noticed by commission members. And so I just thought I would share that feedback as well. So, thank you.
So thank you so much for your report and all the work you've been doing. I know your commission has been very, very busy, and we appreciate all the work and your leadership as chair. Is there, are there any other comments from any of the other council members? Do we have any questions? All right. You guys have done a lot of great work, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Sustainability Commission Annual Report, and I'll invite Chair Amanda Keeper to come up and give that report.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Amanda Keeper. I chair the Sustainability Commission. This is our sixth year as a commission for the city, and I feel like we get better every year. We've met ten, we will meet ten times in two thousand and twenty-five, and we have two meetings left. So first, I'd like to thank our two thousand and twenty-five commissioners. Adam Burnside, Matt Dobretz, Craig Heinen, Alexa Wozeniak, Chris Danner, Katie Boone, and our former and current youth commissioners Helen Burke and Rose Thompson. Also, I want to thank our support staff, Rachel Lindholm and Zach McCarty, and our liaisons, council member Coleman Woods, our liaison to council, and Haley Tompkins, our Community Services Liaison. We always love getting our updates from the Community Services Commission. So the Sustainability Commission creates an annual work plan every year. It provides opportunities for commissioners to lead projects that they care about to help support the city's sustainability work. So that's kind of how we focus our work as a commission. And we have four main focus areas that we tend to concentrate on, and they include performing community outreach and education, hosting community events, protecting, restoring, and enriching Richfield's lands and natural resources, and then learning about the cities and partner organizations' sustainability work and offering policy recommendations to council and staff. So I'll just run through our accomplishments for each of those four areas. We had a really dedicated crew this year that I think really leaned in to the work plan and got a lot done. So we had a good year. In the first focus area of performing community outreach and education, we had a lot of educational tabling this year. Commissioners tabled at the farmer's market, at the State of the Community, the Earth Day event, and the Unity in the Community event about multiple sustainability topics, including tree planting and tree care, solid waste education, and caring for backyard fowl. That's chickens and ducks. Commissioners are also going to be tabling at the Pumpkin Smash that's coming up in November to educate folks about composting and waste reduction, and to try to get more residents to sign up for a curb side organics recycling bin, which is something we've been focusing on the last couple of years. We have a couple commissioners that are leading a project to engage with multi-unit buildings in the city to learn about their sustainability efforts and to share resources with staff and residents. That's a really cool project. Commissioners helped distribute door hangers in southwest Richfield, promoting the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District's Rain Garden Assistance Program. And also commissioners presented at Richfield's two high schools to encourage students to apply to be youth commissioners. And we did have our first youth commissioner this year, and now we have a second one that has come on board to be next year's youth commissioner. So that effort seems to be working, and we're excited about that. In the focus area of hosting community events, our youth commissioner Helen Burke planned and held a trash walking and litter cleanup event around Earth Day. And I was very impressed, Councilmember Burke, at her organization and planning around that. So we were grateful for Helen's work. We also had a commissioner help support the city's first swap event, which was focused on winter clothing. And they even did some outreach to the middle school and high school to help connect students with getting winter clothes that they need and reducing waste at the same time. So it was a win-win. In the focus area of protecting and restoring and enriching Richfield's lands and natural resources, mostly focused around tabling and education there. But in addition to the tree care tabling we did, we also had ongoing discussions as a commission about opportunities to update the city's tree protection policies, and we expect those conversations to continue in two thousand and twenty-six. And in addition to our solid waste education, we had ongoing discussions about ways to reduce plastic litter in the city, including connecting businesses to the minimize program. And finally, our last focus area on learning about the city and partner organizations' sustainability actions and offering policy recommendations. We had the, the commission gave input on and approved the drafted changes to the backyard foul code, which was successfully approved and implemented by council. As was mentioned, we had our annual joint meeting with the Community Services Commission to get those updates about Woodlake and city forestry efforts. We also heard presentations from several partner organizations this year. Nine Mile Creek Watershed, the Four Ninety-four Community Services Board, and Great River Greening. And of course, we received regular updates from our support staff. At most of our meetings, we get great updates about the city's many sustainability topics, including waste reduction, the city's climate action plan, various energy and forestry grants and projects. And the sustainability aspects of Richfield's are a legacy, are a future project. So in summary, it was another great year for the commission, and like I said, we have a great crew that really leaned in and showed up to help educate our community about sustainability. So thank you for the opportunity to share accomplishments. Do you have any questions?
So thank you for all of the work that the commission has done and for all your leadership. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Burke?
Just a quick comment, and I know how much the youth commissioners benefit from this, so please continue that, and thank you so much for your efforts with that.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We do really appreciate all the work that you've done, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And so our final presentation for the evening is the receipt of the city of Richfield Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And I'm going to turn that over to Finance Director Mary Bogie to introduce the presenter. Thank you.
Those are the work papers that support the financial report. And I don't know if you do know that the Finance NAP, there's not one of them that is more than two years with the city. And so this has been a year of learning. They did a fantastic job, and I will turn it over to Caroline to let you hear about the financial report.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me tonight. I'd like, as mentioned, I'm Caroline Stutzman. I'm the partner involved in the audit for the city of Richfield. So I'd like to take a few minutes of your time tonight just to go through the results of that audit. So as we advance through, we'll go one more. The main reason that we are asked to work with the city is to provide an opinion on the financial statements. Also housed, that is housed within the independent auditor's report, and also housed within that independent auditor's report, both management's responsibility as well as ours are outlined. And as mentioned, management's responsibility is for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. That means they're determining the numbers that are held within that financial statement. Our job then is to obtain reasonable assurance that those financial statements are free of material misstatement, meaning we are conducting our audit, we're sampling, we're vouching, we're verifying things. And through that process, the opinion we're providing is what's called an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level that you can receive and not a change from previous years, meaning we do believe those financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. As we, outside of just auditing the numbers, we also conducted our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. That requires us to consider internal controls as we go throughout our process. We have one item of note there, lack of segregation of accounting duties. That is inherently present for cities, especially in a season of turnover. So it's not uncommon to see that with, with all of the changes that you had going on for the year. When you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of federal expenditures in any given year, there is additional requirements, what's called single audit testing. We conducted that this year as well. The programs that were tested were Section Eight and then the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. There were no findings in relation to any of that additional test work. And then one final component before we look at the financial analysis, excuse me, is in relation to Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor compiles a number of Minnesota state statutes that we are required to ask a lot of questions about. We did not have any findings related to any of that activity either. So with that, we'll move on to one more where we start the graphs here, and we start with the general fund. So here we have total revenues, total expenditures, as well as total fund balance. And we'll, we'll look at the details a little bit more on revenues and expenditures, but from this graph's perspective, both increased for the year. The results of that activity did increase fund balance as well by four, or five hundred and forty-one thousand, excuse me. Another way to look at your fund balance is in relation to your fund balance policy. And your fund balance policy indicates that you would strive to maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance of forty percent of the current year actual general fund expenditures. This year's percentage is thirty-eight point one percent. Here we have general fund revenue in more detail. In total, general fund revenue increased by eight point eight percent. Couple of the categories that contributed to that increase are property taxes, which increased as a result of an increase in the levy, licenses and permits increased with additional building activity, and then intergovernmental revenues increased with an increase in local government aid for the city this year. Next, we have a similar presentation for your general fund expenditures. In total, they increased seven point one percent, and across categories, the majority of the explanation relates to increases in wages. Here we have a budget to actual snapshot for your general fund. That first column is the final budget that was approved, which anticipated fund balance would have a break-even year. Actual results are in that middle column, which we've touched on, that bottom value there increasing five hundred and forty-one thousand. And then that third column is a variance column. So looking at total revenues all the way over to that far right, we see revenues were over budget. And if we look at the components above that, the items that are over budget are items that are more volatile or can change based on activity for each year. So really taking a conservative approach on those budget line items is a common practice. And if we follow this chart down to total expenditures, again, to that far right column, seeing under budget there, and if we apply a percentage to that, it's point one percent. So considering the size of budget that you're dealing with to be within point one percent, that's, I would say, very good. Next, we have tax capacity, the levy and tax capacity rates. So the blue is the tax capacity. That increased three point eight percent for two thousand and twenty-four. Green is the levy, which increased five point nine percent. And so with the results of those changes and the levy increasing at a slightly higher rate than the tax capacity, you're seeing a slight increase in that tax capacity rate. Next, we shift gears to your enterprise funds, and we start with your liquor fund. The sales in your liquor fund had essentially a break-even year, slight increase there of less than one percent, point six percent. Cost of sales decreased two and a half. 0.6%. Cost of sales decreased 2.5%. So as a result, if we move to the next slide, we see that gross profit percentage did increase in that very first column there for 2024, as did the gross profit percentage compared to the 2023 amount. All the rest of those are some neighboring cities and their results. So just doing a comparison with the prior year activity, showing that last year slightly below the state average, as well as the other cities that were presented there, but again, seeing the increase for 2024. Here we have Water and Sewer Utilities Fund. Charges for services did decrease here with a decrease in usage for the year. Operating expenses did increase about 7%. So the results of that activity are in that gray bar there, showing an operating loss for the year. We do include operating income and loss with and without depreciation expense. That is included as a means for you to analyze if those charges for services are covering all of your expenses for the fund, including that depreciation, as a means to set dollars aside for future replacement of those assets. In all of the years previous to this, you were covering that depreciation expense 100%. So just this one year. And for 2024, that's still 83% that was being covered. And that's just information for you. Moving on to the next one, the last slide that we have for you is the Storm Sewer Fund. So a similar presentation here, showing that charges for services did decrease about 4.5% for the year. Operating expenses were down a little more than that, about 14%. So as a result, seeing operating income for the year. And it is common for the Storm Sewer Fund to kind of have what you're seeing here based on project years, because it's one where you're kind of cycling through, building up for a project, having a project. So pretty common to see that activity fluctuate like that. That's what I prepared to go through with you. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions? Well, I would like to say thank you to the whole audit team and the whole Finance Department. And for anybody who's watching this or here at the meeting, there's a very interesting document that's over 100 pages. But if you go into it, it has a lot of statistics about Richfield, and like who the biggest employers are, and who the biggest taxpayers are, and all kinds of information that might be of interest to you. So I would encourage people to look at that. So if there are no questions at this point, I would move to accept the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ended December 31, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ended December 31, 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have passed that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we will move on to the consent calendar, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, Item A, approve dispersments and claims. Item B, consider approval for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Blessed Trinity Catholic School located at St. Richards Catholic Church, 7540 Penn Avenue South, for their annual gala taking place December 6, 2025. Item C, first reading of a transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements from the liquor contribution special revenue fund. Item C, sorry, I skipped ahead. First reading, I'm sorry, Item D, consider adoption of a resolution of, of support designating that the photograph "Winter Interest" by Samantha Chin be used to wrap the Hennepin County utility box located at Penn Avenue and 66th Street. Item E, consider approval of an agreement with John A. Dawson &amp; Son, Inc., in the amount of $670,984 for the replacement of the roof on Rink 2 of the Richfield Ice Arena. Item F, consider the first reading of an ordinance imposing a tax on lodging and repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 14 of the Richfield Code of Ordinances. Item G, adopt a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Office of Traffic Safety Funds. The agreement extension was previously approved at the September 9 meeting, but the resolution was omitted from the staff report. Item H, consider approval to renew the contract with Chief's Towing, Inc., for the Public Safety Towing Service, Services for December 1, 2025 through November 30, 2027. Item I, consider the joint powers agreement to enable Richfield to provide an alternative response for selective 911 calls in a manner that most effectively and efficiently supports and protects the physical, mental, behavioral health of individuals in the cities of Richfield and Adina. Item I, site plan approval for 7424 Lindell Avenue South conversion to retail. And I submit all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just on Item J, I just want to express my welcome to the business owners who are present, Lion Cannabis LLC. I watched the Planning Commission meeting, and I just really appreciated the residents who are involved and the work of the business to be a good neighbor to those residents. So thank you, and welcome to Richfield.
Any other comments or questions? On that same topic, I noticed in the staff report that the Traffic Committee is still looking at the issues that came up at the Planning Commission. And so I just wanted to make sure that the residents that talked about that know that that is still on the agenda to be taken care of, all the traffic issues. Secondly, I wanted to say thank you to the City of Adina, because I know it's been good to work with them cooperatively on our alternative response program. And this joint powers agreement will continue forward with that. I know there's, there's been a lot of good work with the two cities working together, and I appreciate that. And finally, I just wanted to clarify for Item F about the lodging tax. Essentially, what this is doing is it's having the Minnesota Department of Revenue start collecting that tax rather than the local people trying to track it down. And it's an efficiency, and I think it will help everyone involved. So thank you to everybody that set all that up. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have approved the consent calendar. Okay, next, we're moving on to public hearings. And what we're going to do is we're going to have one public hearing for all the various assessments. So if it's the, if you want to speak about the solid waste charges, the ILN 77th Street project area, the removal of diseased trees, the sanitary sewer line assessment, or the utility accounts, that will all be happening now. And I'm kind of keeping track of what the comments are. And then after the public hearing closes, we will go back through and consider each of the different areas. And if there are any questions that have come up in the public hearing, we can ask staff to address them at that time. So we'll follow the same procedure that we did for the open forum. And so I will be doing the timekeeping and have the cards when you have 30 seconds left. And then when your time's up to three minutes. And so I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary to start the public hearing.
All right. Yeah, just to add to this, when you're called, Mayor, will you be reading off the cards that have registered in advance?
Yes.
Okay. So the mayor will read off if you have registered in advance. If you have not filled out one of those, you'll still have the opportunity to speak after we get through those who have filled out a card. Any resident wishing to participate in the public hearing, you'll proceed to the podium when called or after that, one at a time. Please provide your name and address prior to your comment. I would also specifically ask if you can, can say which assessment you're, you're here to talk about. That would be helpful for us. We'll hear your comments. If you'd like staff to follow up, please include your name and phone number or email on the sign-in document. Each comment will be limited to three minutes in length. And just as a reminder, we, we can't respond during this time. We are here to listen. We are taking notes. If there are questions, we will do our best to address those or have staff follow up with you. So Mayor, or I will. The mayor is getting the sheet. Okay.
During open forum, it was noted we didn't have a sign-in sheet, so I'm going to create one right now. So if someone would like to have us follow up, and you don't have your name or email on the sheet, we'll use that, and that'll be right there.
It looks like Geraldine Cook will be the first resident to speak.
So when you're filling out the sheet, if you could, you don't have to say it out loud, but if you could put your address or phone number down, that would be helpful.
Yes. I'm a lifelong Richfield resident. I was born and raised here. And I recently bought a house five years ago. You guys recently installed a water meter as an update to the water program, which I thought was great, until I got my water bill the following month, and it went up over $1,100 in a month. At that time, I had lost my social security benefits, because I felt I was working too much when I wasn't working at all. I've bought social security now for the past seven months, finally got my statement reinstated. I came in earlier and talked to Utilities Commission. They actually found some discrepancies on the computer, and they were able to go back and explore that. So they were able to bring down what I owe for the utilities. But they're not giving me any options for monthly payments. They're telling me everything has to be due by November 14. I don't have $1,000 before
Thank you. And if you've put your contact information, we will get back to you on an individual basis, and then when we discuss-
I don't remember if I put my email address on that form or not.
If you just write it on the sheet of paper there, too, that will work.
Okay, thank you.
And then when we get to the water utilities section, we'll talk about how, how the process works. Thank you.
Thank you. I did fill out the form, and I believe you've got my email and everything on there. I have owned property in Richfield since 2014. I am a property owner, but also it's a rental property. I consistently get the water sewer bills, consistently pay them, consistently pay the taxes, make sure all my inspections are done. I, I had a tenant move out of the property at 7315 Logan because I found that she was using it as a daycare center, which is totally illegal. Then I received, a comment came to the address of 7315 Logan, not to the property owner address, which is mine, that said that she had wrote a check for waste disposal in 2023 that came back insufficient funds, but it was not done until after the tax assessments had been created. Now, another one is coming that's saying another one is due 2024. I've never received any information about these being delinquent, and yet I receive all this other information from the city regarding payments that you want from me, information that you need from me. And I'm very disturbed about this. Not only that, I'm not only getting the cost of it, every time the city, the waste management, or every time the disposal company bills, they charge an NSF charge again, and again, and again. The cost of, has practically doubled what the cost of the actual rubbish cost was. And I've talked to, and I don't recall her name, but I've talked to finally so many people that own the company out in California that said she would be willing to work with me, and that I would receive written information. Nothing has been forthcoming. I'd like to see how this issue could be resolved, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And we do have your email address so that the staff can get back with you. So it's written down on the card?
Yes, it is.
Good evening. My name is Linda Minch. I've been a resident of Richfield for 23 years. When I first started getting waste management bills, they were addressed to my address, but someone's name that I had never seen before or heard of. And they were delinquent in hundreds of, of dollars. And so I appeared here before then, or at that point, and the City of Richfield worked with me, and we worked out a deal. And I lived up to my end of the bargain, and waste management has not. They're still billing me for this person. And it's not the person I bought the house from, so I don't know who this person is. But, and they're also charging me every month, or every three months, for yard disposal, yard waste. And I do not have a yard waste can. I've called them. I've talked to somebody's, several people probably. And I've been assured that they will take care of the matter, and it will be resolved. And it hasn't been. So any assistance you could give me, I would appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have your email here, so we can reach out to you afterwards. Our next speaker is Les Rosecke. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing the last name. So it's capital R-O-S-E-C-K-E. Is that person here? It possibly could be the gentleman. We'll, we'll check with one person here.
I'm here, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you're next.
Oh.
Okay, you're up, yep.
All right. Thank you, sir. And can you sign in with a phone number or some way that we can contact you to answer your question?
Mine is very simple. I've been a resident of Richfield since 1981. I'm a senior citizen. I've applied with social service agencies to help with utility payments. I have a large balance due on my waste management. How should I handle it? You're going to have to come to me, because I can't hear a word you're saying from where you are.
Okay. So, sir, I'll come over and show you how to write down your phone number so we can contact you. I'll come over.
Thank you very much.
All right. If you can write down your name and your phone number here, so we can get back to you to help you with that. So put your name and your phone number.
Okay. And that's it?
Yes. We'll have staff get back in touch with you to help you figure it out.
Tomorrow?
I don't know exactly when, but as soon as we can. Probably tomorrow or in the next few days.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marco Luz.
Good evening. My name is Alexa Roselis and I'm representing my dad, Marco Luz. I received the notice about, well, he received the notice about this new assessment and I have a few questions and concerns I'd like to share. First, I'd like to understand exactly what this assessment covers, what project it's for, and how my property share was calculated.
In order to answer that, are you talking about the sanitary sewer assessment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And second, I'd like to ask why the previous agreement of paying each year wasn't respected. That arrangement helped families like mine manage the cost better and changing it now will negatively impact our family's economy. Lastly, I'd like to know what options exist for payment plans or deferrals in situations where the full amount can't be paid by the deadline.
I'm taking notes, so hold on a second.
Okay. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. And we have your email address written down so we can get back to you as well.
Yes, thank you.
That was all of the cards that were filled out ahead of time. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Great. Anyone else that wishes to speak at the public hearing?
I'm moved that we close the public hearing.
It's been, did you second?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So I'm going to take a moment to make sure all of the contact information gets to staff and then we will go through each individual assessment. So now we're going to move on to item 9A. We've already had the public hearing, so we'll just be considering the resolution. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary to do item 9A. Thank you.
All right. And then this item will be considering a resolution adopting the proposed certification of delinquent solid waste charges to property taxes within the residential organized collection system from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. Garbage recycling organics and yard waste services for most residential properties in the city is provided through the city's organized collection program established in 2021. The city requires services to be provided by the haulers even if a resident has not paid their service bills, as not having waste picked up is a public health concern. As a result of this requirement, the city agreed to take on the certification process to resolve unpaid balances. As of October 2nd, 2025, city staff determined the actual pending unpaid garbage collection services to be $180,474.83. This amount will continue to be adjusted as assessments are paid before being sent to the county. Would staff like to say anything before I make a motion? No? Okay. I will move that we adopt a resolution adopting the certification of costs incurred for unpaid garbage collection services between July 1st, 2024 and June 30th, 2025.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We're open for discussion and questions? Okay, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I guess this is probably a question that really applies to all of them, but a number of folks mentioned this deadline to pay. My understanding is that that deadline would be if they didn't want it to be assessed to the property taxes. I'm assuming if it is assessed to the property taxes, either it's basically on their mortgage bill or they pay it twice per year if they own their property outright.
Councilmember, and mayor and council, the due date deadline to pay is prior to when the city sends assessment or certification rolls to the county for property tax assessment. Yes.
Okay. In the situation, somebody does own their property outright, is there any way to split the payment into smaller amounts than what would be split by the county's property tax payment?
Unfortunately, I'm not the right person to ask that question to.
Does any other staff know?
Mayor and councilmember, I think I can answer that. So the resolution adopting these assessments indicates that this is a one annual installment, so it would be paid on next year's taxes. And so it's really, we have to go with the county's collection of those amounts. It's not up to the city.
Okay. But it would be paid in the same manner as any other part of your property tax?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no interest if it's paid by the 14th of November?
That is correct, mayor.
But then after there, it would go forward? There were a number of people that talked about needing to work with staff, so staff will be reaching out to those people. And I'm trying, looking through the things, let's see. So the question that I also would like staff to look into, there was a question of are there any social services programs that help with these things? Would that be through Hennepin County?
Mayor, there are programs and it is through Hennepin County. They are often, there is more demand than there is availability. We can certainly connect residents and have done so through utility billing. I know we have. And we can, and I will circle back, I've taken notes as well and see what we can do.
Okay. Are there any other questions that came up during, open, during the public hearing that we haven't asked about? All right. So then we have a motion to adopt the resolution for the certification of costs incurred for unpaid garbage collection services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we've passed that recommendation. And so staff will be reaching out to the people that spoke on their, on that matter. So next we will move on to the public, or excuse me, we did the public hearing. We'll move on to consider the resolution for the ILN 77th Street project area and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Burke.
So the item for consideration is to consider a resolution adopting the assessment on the ILN/77th Street project area for $130,596.78. Again, that's $130,596.78 for costs incurred to maintain the area for 2024 and a resolution ordering the undertaking of the current service project within the ILN/77th Street project area for 2026. The Interstate Lyndale Nicolet or ILN/77th Street project area assessment was established to recover special maintenance expenses in the 77th Street area in 1988. Current services include maintenance and operation of irrigation systems, weed control, mowing, fertilization, trash and litter removal, replantings, noise wall maintenance, and tree removal replacement and maintenance. These current services are provided on both sides of the 77th Street noise wall. The maintenance functions are funded through a maintenance assessment on 77th Street commercial properties. So the recommended action is to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment on the ILN 77th Street project area for $130,596.78 for costs incurred to maintain the area for 2024. And a second action to adopt a resolution ordering the undertaking of the current service project within the ILN/77th Street project area for 2026. Staff, anything to add to that?
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or discussion? I don't believe anybody spoke to that at the public hearing, so we don't have any questions from that. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we've adopted both resolutions. Next, we'll move on to item 9C, which has to do with the special assessments for the removal of diseased trees, and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Coleman Woods.
Thank you, mayor. The item for consideration before the council today is a public hearing and consider a resolution adopting special assessments for the removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And in summary, the health of the trees, health of trees within municipal limits is threatened by shade tree diseases and it is the city's responsibility to control and prevent the spread of these diseases. And if the city deems it necessary to remove a diseased tree on private property, the property owners have three options available. One, remove the tree themselves. Two, hire and pay for their own contractor to remove the tree. Or three, hire their own contractor and request the cost of the tree removal be assessed against their property tax. In the period from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, 24 property owners chose to assess or were designated for assessment and four property owners have since paid off their entire balance. The total amount being assessed to be assessed is currently $45,420.15 across 20 properties. The recommended action is to conduct and close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for special assessments for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Do staff have any comments or recommendations?
For this program, it's very, very hard to come up with kind of, that kind of money out of nowhere for trees and also for sanitary sewer lining. So thank you and again, this one's paid over five years.
Thank you. That was what my question was going to be, if it could be spread out over the five years. So that is good information to have. So we have the motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So no one spoke about this at the public hearing. Are there any questions that any council members have? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we've adopted the resolution. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 9D, Councilmember Christensen, and that has to do with the special assessments for the sanitary sewer line replacements.
Thank you, mayor. This is, item for consideration is to adopt, consider a resolution adopting special assessments for sanitary sewer line repair or replacement on private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2024 through August 1st, 2025. The sanitary sewer line special assessment program was developed with the aim of lessening the financial burden residents experience when their sanitary sewer fails. The program allows the city to pay the initial cost of a given sewer repair and then recoup these costs from the property, those costs from the property via special assessment over a five-year period. This allows a property owner to have the sewer repaired quickly, but to pay off the costs of the work over a more manageable timeline. From January 1st, 2024 to August 1st, 2025, 13 properties chose to participate in the program, which resulted in $93,371 in sewer repairs being paid by the city. Recommended action is by motion is to adopt a resolution for special assessments for sanitary sewer line repair or replacement on private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2024 through August 1st, 2025. Does the staff have any input in this?
This is just like the tree assessment where this one also is paid over five years.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So we did receive, I believe, one comment on this item and it sounded like the person was unaware of the nature of the charges, but just to clarify, the property owner would have had to sort of sign up for this, right? Okay. I hope you can follow up with that property owner, but it doesn't, the testimony doesn't quite align with my understanding of the program.
And that was, my question is, we do want to follow up with the person to make sure that we're talking about the right thing because we also have sanitary sewer charges. But you're talking about in this program is like if the sewer line from the house to the city sewer fails and the city covers the cost and then you have five years to pay it back?
Yeah, mayor, that's correct.
All right. So it's going to be very important that we reach out and, and talk with the individuals involved here so that we can work it out. But I'm glad to hear that there's going to be a five-year payment period over the time to fill it out. All right. Any other comments or questions? So all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? And we have adopted the resolution. Next, we'll move on to item 9E and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and this has to do with the assessments for utility accounts and other things.
Yep. This is to consider a resolution adopting the proposed assessment of delinquent utility accounts, false alarm charges, public health or safety hazard charges, weed eradication charges, and vacant property registration fees to be certified to property taxes. Minnesota State statutes 444.075, 429.101, and 429.061 provide that certain unpaid charges may be assessed against the benefiting property. Chapter 7 of the Richfield Code of Ordinances provide that unpaid water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and streetlight charges may be certified to the county auditor to be included in a property owner's annual property tax bill. Section 925-02 subdivision 5, section 915-07 subdivision 3, and chapter 8.02 of the city charter provide that the city is allowed to specially assess delinquent fees. The city code authorizes a certification fee to be charged against each delinquent account. By certifying the delinquent charges to the property taxes, the city is assured of collection of the charges. The delinquent accounts must be certified to the county auditor in order for the city to collect the charges through the property tax payment process. Property owners have been notified that any unpaid charges or fees may be assessed against the property. Does staff have anything to add prior to me making a motion?
We're available for questions.
Okay. I will move that we approve the attached resolution authorizing certification of unpaid water, sanitary sewer, storm water, and streetlight charges, false alarm charges, public health or safety hazards, weed eradication charges, and vacant property registration fees to the county auditor to be collected with other taxes on said properties.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments? I believe it came up in the public hearing about whether there are options for payment plans for this. And so it's my understanding if it's, if, if you pay by November 14th, you don't get interest, but otherwise it'll be put on the property taxes for the following year so that you could pay it off in the normal manner for paying off property taxes. But we will have staff reach out and talk to the residents that spoke?
That is correct, here.
Okay, so all of that is correct information and so we'll make sure we work with the people that testified tonight. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I want to thank everybody that came out and spoke with us this evening and I'm hoping we can work it out with staff to make sure we go through the whole process and figure out the, the plan for how everything goes. I know there's, some of the staff is already out in the hall talking with people and so some of it may get resolved yet tonight. Thank you. Next, we'll be moving on to other business and for item 12A, we'll go to Commissioner Coleman Woods and we'll let you take off with that one. That is the appointment of youth commissioners to the city advisory boards and commissions.
Great, thank you, mayor. And the city advisory commission terms for youth members are for one year and terms expire in, on August 31st, 2026. The city manager's office offers an ongoing recruitment window for vacant youth commissioner seats and includes information on the city's website, Facebook page, and the communication, and communication with the local high schools. Both applications received were forwarded to the city council for review. And do staff have any recommendations prior to me making the motion? Great. And in which case- And in which case, a motion, a motion to approve the appointment of Jaylee Portales to the advisory board of health and Carmen Melnichuk to the arts commission as youth commissioners.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would say that I'm really thrilled that we're starting to get more youth commissioners. We always had a lot of youth commissioners, and then COVID hit, and we lost all our youth commissioners, and now it's great to start seeing people getting involved in the youth being on the commissions, because it's a valuable viewpoint that we need to have. So, if there's no further discussion, all in, did I have a second on that one? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And thank you to our youth commissioners for applying, and welcome to the commissions. Next, we'll move on to item 12B, and I'll turn that over to councilmember Burke.
So, the item for consideration is to consider approval of an agreement between the city of Richfield and the Science Museum of Minnesota in the amount of $354,658 for professional services in the fabrication and installation of interpretive exhibits for the new Wood Lake Nature Center building, as well as an agreement with Blue Rhino in the amount of $354,500 for the same services and with the same terms and conditions. The project was jointly bid for a total of $709,158. The new Wood Lake Nature Center building will include displays that educate the public and provide interpretive information about the natural habitat at Wood Lake Nature Center. The Science Museum of Minnesota and Blue Rhino were contacted, were contracted in August 2024 to design the new exhibit space. Designs were completed in August 2025. An invitation for bids to fabricate and install the exhibits was published on July 31st, 2025, with bids due on August 12th, 2025. A single bid was received, submitted jointly by the Science Museum of Minnesota and Blue Rhino Studios for $709,158. The work is divided between the two organizations, with the Science Museum of Minnesota completing the interactive exhibit fabrication work, and Blue Rhino Studios completing the murals, sculptures, and snoops. The city will contract with each firm individually with the same terms and conditions. The total cost of both phases for the Science Museum of Minnesota came to $354,658, with a phase one cost of $229,790. Total cost of both phases for Blue Rhino is $354,500, with a phase one cost of $312,500. Only the Science Museum of Minnesota agreement is attached here, with the understanding that the Blue Rhino contract will be identical in terms and conditions, but with reference to their portion of the project as detailed in their bid. Does staff have anything to add?
We're available for questions.
Okay. So, the recommended action is to approve the agreement between the city of Richfield and the Science Museum of Minnesota in the amount of $354,658 for professional services in the fabrication and installation of interpretive exhibits for the new Wood Lake Nature Center building, as well as an agreement with Blue Rhino in the amount of $354,500 for the same services and with the same terms and conditions, and authorize the mayor and city manager to finalize and execute both contracts. So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to say I appreciated seeing some of the examples of the contractors' other work. It looks really cool, and I think it's going to be great. I would like.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just want to duplicate that. It's really exciting to look at what's possible, and I can't wait to see it happen. Thank you.
I have one curiosity question. It mentioned murals, sculptures, and snoops. So, what is a snoop?
A snoop would be sort of a hidden, it might be, it might swing, you might come up and look in a little globe and see something small, but a globe would make it bigger. So, the little secret hideout, they're secret places in the murals where you find out new information about what the mural is in. So, a Jack in the pulpit, you'd open it up, and you'd find out something you didn't know about a Jack in the pulpit. So, just a different, a different way to share information.
So, it makes it more interactive?
More interactive, and they're in fun, offbeat parts of the exhibits, so they're, some are easy to find, some are a little bit more challenging to find.
And I would echo the sentiments that it's very exciting to see the project moving forward. I know what, we're not talking about the geothermal wells right now, but it's kind of fun to see those going in. So, thank you for all the work on the project.
Thank you for all your work.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have passed the resolution. Next, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. We had three speakers at our last open forum. Ms. Balaban asked for more information on our commission webpages, more detailed minutes, and the ability to be able to view the commission meetings. We will have more consistent commission pages once we update the website. As far as minutes, we have answered these questions before. We do approve the minutes on the commission's webpages, but it's done after they approve them, and so, because they're meeting less often than the council, they may not get posted as quickly. So, you have to wait a month before they're approved, and then they're posted. And also, we don't record at the board and commission meetings because of costs and also staff time limitations. Mr. Sather provided comments on short-term rentals, but did not have any questions. He did talk to me after the meeting, and he was pleased with the council's actions on the short-term rental licensing program. Mr. Lowery spoke again with his concerns about loud traffic near his home. He did say that we had not responded to the message from Main Street Village, and we have responded both verbally and in writing. And public safety will continue to control the area. Finally, I wanted to announce some good news. We were picked as a stop on the senate bonding tour. It will be Wednesday, October 29th, at 5:40, and we only have 15 minutes, so it will be a very short, two-block tour, but I will send the council more details, and I hope some of you can attend. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for city manager Rodriguez? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just to confirm, the senate bonding tour is looking at Nicolet Avenue, or is there a difference? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to council discussion items, and that will include both hats off to hometown hits, and if you have any liaison reports to give for the commissions and groups that you're liaisons to, you can. First of all, I would like to begin with some actual, some sad news. We were saddened to hear of the recent death of Rick Jabs. Many of you may remember all the work Mr. Jabs did in community service here in Richfield. In fact, he was the recipient of the first annual Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award for his commitment to the Richfield community. He was involved in everything from the Little League to the band boosters to the remodeling fair. Mr. Jabs was chair of both the building committee for this municipal center that we're sitting in right now and for the band shell, and we are so grateful for all he did for our community. Our deepest condolences to Rick's family and friends, and I believe councilmember Hayford O'Leary wanted to add some words to.
Yeah, this, I heard this news from another longtime Richfield volunteer, and I was really saddened to hear it. Rick Jabs was the chair of the planning commission when I first joined it about 10 years ago, and he was just a really good leader, and it was obvious that that went well beyond the planning commission. But he was the sort of leader, and you could tell this with the other commissioners who'd been on there longer and with staff, the sort of leader that makes it almost effortless to follow their lead. You know, it just feels natural. He felt at ease, he had a humble spirit, and he really gave a lot to Richfield. That was true in the planning commission, it was true in some of the other things that the mayor mentioned, including his ongoing support for the band shell, both through city task forces and being involved in the private nonprofit that helped support its construction. I know that Rick ended up living out his last years in Bloomington, but his spirit will always be with Richfield, and we are really grateful for everything he gave to the community. So, thank you, Rick, and thank you to his family for sharing him.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, did you have any other items?
I have no additional items.
All right. Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Coleman Woods?
Hats off to Morris Nielsen for hosting the, I don't know how many years they've been doing that, but it's been a long time, and they had a line around the block for the trunk-or-treat. And so, I continue to get excited about Halloween season, because my kids are too old to, well, they don't claim to trick-or-treat, but they're outside. But the trunk-or-treat has been a longstanding part of our community, and it's always fun to see all the kids outside and dressed up. So, thank you, Morris Nielsen.
Yes, that was, I was at the trunk-or-treat as well, and it was a lot of fun seeing all the costumes and the kids and all the community participants. Another great Halloween tradition is the grape pumpkin giveaway, and so that was earlier that same day, and I believe they gave away over 550 pumpkins, and it was just fun seeing all the kids out there having a great time. They had an inflatable obstacle course, there were people, local businesses had donated things, so like they could put glitter sparkle things in your hair, I don't know the exact name for it. There were cider, the kids were playing on the playground. We had a coloring contest that the arts commission helped with, and there were also things like picture booths, and just, it was just a fun activity for everybody. So, hats off to all the people that helped contribute to that and all the people that participated as well. And finally, we had reports from two of our commissions tonight, and if you would like to join one of the commissions, the application period is open through October 31st, and so you can go on the website and apply to be on one of those commissions, and we would look forward to having you be part of that. So, thank you all for being here this evening. We have no further business, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we stand adjourned. Thank you.